This meeting is being called to order the Union County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, June 24th, 2021, agenda meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes Chairman, Commissioner Garrettson.
Present.
Commissioner Granados, Commissioner Hudak, Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri Mudeg.
Here.
Commissioner Staton, Vice Chair Williams, and Chairman Mirabella.
Present.
Chairman, you have five commissioners present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humblingly ask God, giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Clerk. While everybody's getting their video started, can you please read the Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Yes, the Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title X, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of New has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the county who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Good evening and welcome to another remote meeting of the Commissioner Board. As usual, we have a lot of ground to cover tonight, so let me make a couple of statements and we'll get on with our meeting. Union County is getting back to normal, but the COVID-19 virus is still with us in our state, in our country, and across the world. Vaccinated people are protected, but if you are not vaccinated, you still run the risk of dying or experiencing lifelong debilitating impacts. So please, if you want to come out and have fun with everybody else, get your vaccine now. We are ramping up our mobile vaccination operations, and we're literally going door to door to help ensure everyone has access to a vaccine. Visit ucnj.org/vax to find out where you can get your shot in Union County, or call us at 908-613-7VAX. We know that many residents are still feeling the final impacts of the outbreak for food assistance. Come to the drive-through food distribution event at Kane University this Saturday, June 26th, beginning at 8:00 in the morning. I'd also like to let everyone know that summer activities are returning to county parks in accordance with the latest guidance from Governor Murphy and the CDC. We have programs for all ages and abilities, so check the county website, ucnj.org, or follow us on social media for the latest updates. In honor of the Month of Pride Month, this Monday, we will break ground on an upgrade in the north end corner of Cedar Brook Park. The improvements will include unique features that create a welcoming, inclusive, and affirming space for all ages to enjoy. We're looking forward to seeing this new park take shape over the summer, and I'd like to thank Vice Chair Williams for her support and guidance in this project. In another sign that we're getting back to normal, I'm happy to report that the county is sponsoring fireworks in celebration of Independence Day in seven municipalities: Kenilworth, Scotch Plains, Cranford, Springfield, Plainfield, Roselle Park, and Raway. Please enjoy these fireworks and stay safe during the upcoming holiday weekend. We're also looking forward to July 14th, when New Providence will hold an official ribbon cutting to celebrate the first baseball game to be played on the newly renovated Grove Field. This work was supported by a grant from the Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund. The trust fund has improved municipal parks and fields all over our county, and it's really my pleasure on behalf of the board to see all these in action. Finally, I want to recognize everyone who responded to a distress call from a resident who became overwhelmed while hiking out in the woods at Scotch Plains over the weekend. Locating him and bringing him out to look took a coordinated effort that included the Union County Police, Emergency Management, and EMS, as well as the Scotch Plains Police and Fire Personnel, and the crew from the Union County Regional Dispatch Center, Madison Evans, Anthony Longo, and Jackie Templeton, Brandon Beal, Nicole Grossmith, and Gerald Patoba. I want to personally and on behalf of this board, thank everyone for their ability to combine resources and respond quickly to a challenging situation that could have ended in a tragedy. So thank you all. Now let's turn to the business of tonight's meeting. We have one presentation for tonight, and I'm happy to acknowledge and introduce both UC, Union County Vocational Technical School Superintendent Gwen Ryan, and NJAC Executive Director John DiNatio, who is representing the NJAC Foundation. I'm really so happy to have both of you participate in our meeting. You're both great friends of Union County, are so helpful to us throughout the year, and this is a really good opportunity to share some good news. And I want to ask first, John, from the New Jersey Association of Counties, to say a few words on the process and some other interesting ideas. So, John?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it's great to see you and everyone, and Chairwoman, Commissioner Garrettson too. It's good to see you on the NJAC Board and everyone else as well, from my friends in Union County. And I look forward to coming back to an in-person meeting in my home county very soon. So I very much look forward to that. I can tell you that working with the NJAC Foundation is by far my favorite thing to do with the New Jersey Association of Counties. We always have, it sounds like, seems like we always have bad news to share with all the things that are coming out of, you know, Trenton and government and all the tough stuff that we've had to deal with over the past, you know, year and a half with the public health emergency. But this is by far my favorite thing to do, and I'm very proud of the fact that over the past decade, through the NJAC Foundation, we've been able to give away over $400,000 to closest 700 students, county vocational technical school graduates who are continuing their education right here in the state of New Jersey. And I really just want to commend just a terrific group of students that received scholarships here. They did a fantastic job. I want to thank the superintendents at all the county vocational technical schools for their help in nominating the students. And I want to thank Investors Bank, PSCNG, SHI, again, for just their continued generosity. Our scholarship program would not be able to do what we've done without them. We give away 100% of the monies, and again, I love it particularly because I love giving away other people's money with five kids. So this is a great thing. Congratulations to the student, and thank you again for a couple of minutes today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John, and I appreciate those words and all your work of advocacy on behalf of our counties. You do a terrific job day to day out, and I'm glad that you're in the spot that you're in. You keep an eye on things for our counties and do an outstanding job. So I appreciate you tonight and all throughout the year. Let me move over to Superintendent Ryan. I had the pleasure to be with the superintendent earlier this week, and attended two graduations of our vocational students, but I'll get into that a little bit later, but I want to ask the superintendent to say a couple of words right down to you.
Sure, thank you. So I also wanted to just say thank you to the New Jersey Association of Counties Foundation and to companies like SHI International, PSCNG Investors, for making these scholarships available to students in career and technical education programs. Partnerships with industry are so important to what we do at county vocational technical schools. And also, a big thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for recognizing Alex and being so supportive of our students' accomplishments. And of course, congratulations to Alex and his family. I see them here. Of course, we're so happy for him. And I just have to say as an aside, we were fortunate to work with Alex a lot this year. He was selected as one of our technology or IT interns, and boy, what a year was it to be a technology intern, but he was incredible. And we'll miss him, and I'm so glad to be able to, you know, be here to say congratulations to Alex and wish him well at Rutgers next year.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and thanks to Nick and Mike for all your efforts on behalf of your corporations to make the finances available for our students. And I appreciate both of you, and thank you very much for what you do. And on behalf of the board, I really appreciate it. Alex, I want to actually turn it over to you if you want to say a couple of words. I mean, it's up to you if you would like to. And we'd love to hear from you if you want to make a couple of comments.
Thank you. This year was a lot harder than I thought it would be, especially as a tech intern, since most of my time was mostly spent on the bus, just traveling to and fro from my house and to school just to help with a bunch of teachers. This scholarship will help me a lot, actually, because my family isn't as fortunate as other families. And just trying to order books, this scholarship will help like for a year or two. So thank you very much.
Where are you going to school, Alex?
Rutgers, New Brunswick, attending the School of Arts and Sciences.
Terrific, terrific. Well, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Congratulations, and you have your whole world ahead of you. Do some good things, will you? I don't know if Nick or Mike, you guys want to say anything? Certainly we'll make the floor available for you. Be happy to hear from you if you want. Nick?
Sure, thank you. I'll keep it short and sweet. I just first want to say thank you to the commissioners for allowing us the opportunity. And for the time that we've worked together, this is SHI's small way of giving back to the community. And also thanks to John and NJAC for allowing us to make this possible. Congratulations, Alex.
Terrific.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Michael?
Thanks, Commissioner. I appreciate it. It's a pleasure for PSCNG to partner with the NJAC Foundation to provide these scholarships. It's a great resource for students, successful students, and I just wanted to say, congratulations, Alex. Best of luck. I have a Rutgers grad. I had my daughter graduated from Rutgers Nursing School this year, so go Scarlet Knights and have an enjoyable year.
Very good. Thank you both. Appreciate you. And John and Superintendent Ryan, thank you for all your work in this space. It's rewarding for us as well, John, to see these students and get a little help along the way and get on to their college career. So we're proud of you, Alex, and wish you the best. So keep up the good work. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have all claps. I wish you could hear it in person. All right, be well, and you're welcome to stay, although I imagine many of you will not need to participate in the rest of the meeting, but you can sign off and have a great night.
You too.
Great. Okay, now we'll move on to resolutions from the various departments. And we'll start with our first Assistant Prosecutor, Doreen Yannick, to present the resolutions from the prosecutor's office.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairman. Good evening and good evening, Commissioners. We have, the Union County Prosecutor's Office has four resolutions for your consideration this evening. Should you have any questions, I'm here to answer any of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Prosecutor. Any questions? I'll be using the hands-up feature as we have in our practice here. I do not see any, so thank you very much. And give the outgoing prosecutor our best. We had a chance to kind of see her off a little bit at the last meeting, but she did a terrific job in Union County at the prosecutor's office for her tenure as our prosecutor. And thank you for all your efforts at the same time, too. So appreciate both of you, and please send our best wishes to the prosecutor.
I certainly will. Thank you so much, Chairman. Much appreciated.
All right, we'll move to the Board of Elections, and that is our Administrator Nicole Dorado. She had an assistant before. I don't know if she still has her assistant with her.
Good evening, Chair. I hope you all are well. The Board of Elections has one resolution on the agenda for your consideration this evening, and I'd be very happy to answer any questions.
Nicole, I don't see any questions, but could you go into a little bit of a detail about what this resolution is doing?
Yes, so last year, as we typically do, we awarded our 2021 contracts for transportation of our election equipment. And we award for $60,000, which would have covered the primary and the general. As you know, last year, we utilized space in the former juvenile detention center as our tally center. And we had three vote tabulators and an envelope mail processing machine at the juvenile detention center as part of our tally center. When we vacated that facility, we weren't quite sure where we were going to host the tally center for the primary yet. But we, so we had to have our transportation company move all of that equipment to our voting machine warehouse to get it out of the juvenile detention center. Once we determined that we would host our tally center at our main office in Elizabeth, we had two of our paper tabulation machines and the mail processing machine brought over to our main office in Elizabeth. So I hired Liberty Transportation to make those moves for us, since the equipment, each vote tabulator, is very, very expensive for the paper ballots. They're over $110,000 each, and I wanted to make sure that it was done by professional movers and they were fully insured. So the increase of this contract was to cover the costs of those moves and to get us through the rest of the year.
Good. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Definitely want to move them in the right way, for sure. So thank you. I don't see any questions, so have a great night. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Let's move to the Department of Administrative Services Director Scatari.
Good evening. The Department of Administrative Services has 12 resolutions on the agenda, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Most of these look like insurance-related, but...
Yes, it's time to renew our insurance. We're doing it for three years with an option to renew for six months, which will get us onto a calendar year eventually.
Good idea.
Which will help in budgetary and doing comparisons year to year instead of a July 1st start date.
Director, could you speak on item six, Mr. Chairman? Is that okay?
Yes, sure.
The increase for, so Eric Bernstein and Associates is one of our special counsel for specifically personnel matters and disciplinary actions. And we have about 15 cases unfortunately that he's working on. So this is an increase of $85,000 just to continue working and close out all those matters.
Is that a significant increase over last year?
Last year, we did, sorry, one second, 120,000. So, yes.
Okay, Commissioner, any other questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
We'll move to the Department of Corrections, and I will recognize Officer Cesaro. How are you, Robert?
How are you, Chairman? Good. So the Department of Corrections has one amendment to a current resolution, which is on the agenda for the commissioner's consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
What, can you just speak to, this is a significant item. Can you just speak to it a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. So with the reduction of services that we'll be providing here shortly, we had to have our staff look for further employment in other law enforcement agencies outside of the county. They have mostly done that. That has there caused me to reduce the population of the inmates. So with safety and security of the inmates being paramount and of the staff, we then had to increase the amount of inmates going to Essex County. Therefore, the increase in money.
I can't really hear you very well.
Oh. So I was saying that due to our staff having found other jobs and other law enforcement opportunities due to the reduction of services at the county jail, we had to then reduce the population here at the jail of the inmate population, sending additional inmates to Essex County with the shared service. With safety and security of the staff and the inmates being a paramount concern, we are then therefore asking for the increase in the funds to have the further population of inmates going to Essex.
Okay, anything additional, Commissioner?
I guess I'm still not really clear, but I mean, I think I kind of understand what he's saying, but I'm not 100% clear.
I could try to help, Commissioner. As everybody knows, we're closing the jail on July 1st. We have a rank and file corrections officers. They know the closing is coming, so they've left to find other employment. So because of our rank of officers are down, we still have the population. We had to transfer them out earlier than July 1st, which is our closing date, thus the increase in cost.
Increasing cost in the transition?
Or increasing... No, we have an existing shared service with several counties. The case, we transfer inmates all the time. If somebody's on the same trial together, if a couple of inmates have behavioral issues, fighting and stuff, so people are transferred all the time. We were going to transfer everybody by July 1st when the jail is closed, but because a lot of guards left earlier, we had to transfer people in May and early June because we didn't have enough guards to even out how many inmates we had. So the guards left first, so we had to keep sending the inmates out accordingly.
Because there wasn't a similar ratio, basically.
Correct, right. Guards went down. We had to get the inmates out earlier.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thanks, Director. Thanks, County Manager. Let me just remind the commissioners to use the hands-up feature. I think that will help us organize the question period. So please, if you can use that, that would be great. Let's move to the Department of Economic Development, Deputy County Manager Wagner.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Economic Development has six resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes, could you please expand on number three, please?
Yes, so we have to go out for RFP for a provider to operate the American Job Centers. In essence, we are our own contractor. So the Department of Human Services applied to the RFP, and they were awarded the contract for two years. That two-year period ends at the end of June, and so this extends that contract for two more years. Excuse me, it extends it for one more year. I apologize.
Okay, Commissioner, do you have anything else for Deputy County Manager?
Yes, please. So what was the amount prior? What was the amount before this extension?
It's $2 million each year is their operating budget.
And we've used that exact amount each year?
For the most part, yes, they do. Sometimes all the funds aren't expended. This year was a little bit more challenging because of the pandemic and not being able to get people into job training and some of the other activities. So we can roll some of those funds over into another year, but this is the annual allocation for those services.
Thank you so much. That's very helpful. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you. Anybody else? I don't see the hands, so thank you, Deputy County Manager. We'll move to the Department of Engineering, Public Works, and Facilities Management, and that is Director Graziano.
Evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I have resolutions on this evening for your consideration. I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Director, can you just give an update on number three, the fire code?
I actually have Troy Moore Ziadion from Mast. Troy could probably give a more detailed explanation than I can. So Troy?
Yeah, how you doing, everybody? Hi, Commissioner. Basically, we are at the second phase of the second phase of the project. The project was broken down between the rotunda and the stair tower project. The rotunda was completed last March prior to finalizing all the sign-offs and everything. We finally received the certificate of completion last month, so that job is 100% complete, which was the fire code upgrade, smoke evac system in the rotunda. We are now in the process of putting Phase Two, which is the stair tower through floors one through 16 in the tower building. That was broken up into three phases. Phase one, because we have, we can't take all the courtrooms out at once. We had to do it in three phases. So the first phase was floors one through four, which is completed right now and turned over to the county judiciary. The second phase is five through eight, which is completed right now and turned over. And now we're in the last phase, Phase Three, which is nine through 16. As of now, we're looking to be complete with that phase 100% complete by the end of October. So that would basically turn back all floors nine through 16 back to the county and judiciary for use.
Okay, so when is the actual project going to be finished? Are we talking about this year, or are we talking about it's going to take a lot of time?
You're talking about probably by the end of the year for the final sign-offs. It usually takes that way with the building department. Right now, like I said, work on floors one through eight is complete. So right now, we're only doing nine through 16, which involves interior demo, because basically you're putting a staircase through the whole building. So right now, all the interior demo was done. We're in the process right now of putting structural steel to support, and then we will be demoing the floors 16, 15, 14, 13, 12 through nine. And then, once that is done, then we'll erect the staircase through. So you'll probably, for all your final sign-offs, be 100% complete with the project will be definitely by the end of the year.
Well, I'll tell you something. That's a real nice milestone to get through this project and get that done. We've been, some of the commissioners maybe haven't been around as long as I have, Commissioner Kowalski, but this has been something that the state has been mandating us to do for 10, 15 years. And, you know, the result of all the time figuring out the best way to do this was an external staircase, an internal staircase. It resulted in the new court building, courthouse that was opened a couple of years ago. So to see this to fruition, I just wanted to make sure what I heard was at the end of the year. And that's really wonderful progress and a lot of time planning. The county manager, Director Graziano, and working with you and your firm, that's great to hear because it's important. It was a real safety, risk, and hazard. Thank God we didn't have any problems, but there could have been. And, you know, this is a result of a lot of work and a lot of effort to make that courthouse more safe and protect it of the historical value and the structural integrity, both. I'm really happy to hear this update. So Troy, thank you on behalf of the Commissioners, Director Graziano. Appreciate all your efforts, and I'm glad to see this be done.
Thank you. I couldn't have said it better. And you're right, it was a total effort with dealing with facilities, judiciary, moving people around. It was a total effort by everybody to get it done, and it is a big milestone once it is completed.
Yeah, and actually, I had a chance to talk with the assignment judge, Judge Cassidy, yesterday. And she's been terrific throughout this project, and not only this within her courthouse, but also the new courthouse. And, you know, she shared with me her plans of retiring, and I'm sure she's happy that this is going to be completed in the year that she retires as well. So that's great for everybody's account. All right, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, good. Any other questions, Commissioners, on this or any other Director Graziano's resolutions? Okay, Director, I don't see any. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Chairman, thank you very much.
Let's move to the Department of Finance. Eric Masaius is here representing the department. Eric?
Good evening, Chairman. Board of Commissioners, the Department of Finance has nine resolutions for your consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Garrettson? You're on mute, Commissioner.
Items four, five, seven, and eight, please.
Or, item four is a Chapter 159 grant that pertains to a clean... Or item four is a chapter one fifty-nine grant that were and pertains to a clean community grant the county has received. That clean community grant is an annual. Grant we receive, and this one is a renewal. Five is similar to the clean communities grant, it's a it's another grant that we receive annually. It's a renewal as well, and this pertains to the C. Universal Service Fund, CWA Administration Program Grant. Six is the. A new grant that we received for the first time, and it pertains to the addressing the needs of juvenile prosecutors. And I apologize, Commissioner, what was the last item you mentioned?
It was actually, you gave me a bonus six, but could you tell me about seven and eight, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Seven and eight are also grant renewals, we receive them annually, and seven pertains to the New Jersey Job Access Reserve Commute Grant. And eight pertains to the Veterans Paratransit Program Grant.
Thank you so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Commissioner, thanks for that question, Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you Commissioner, just adding a little information for Commissioner Garrettson, that the JARC grant, I believe, is. Going to help keep the Route twenty-two shuttle going, we started that some years ago, and that's been very helpful for people who travel that route.
Thank you very, am I on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, my head's down, sorry, thank you.
Good, no, thank you Commissioner Kowalski for that information, appreciate you. Okay, Eric, I don't see anybody else's hands up, so thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We'll move to the Department of Human Services, Director Anderson.
Good evening Chairman and members of the board, the Department of Human Services have seven resolutions on, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Mudet.
Thank you Chair, hi Director. Of number, I guess associated with number four and number six, do you have an update of the number of like pounds of food meals that we have been able to distribute to date?
So through the month of June, we probably have distributed, you know, our celebration event, we advertised it was five point three million. And then five point eight pounds, but we added since that date, we've added about a hundred thousand per. So about five point four for the meals that was distributed and about five point nine on the pounds that was distributed throughout Union County.
Excellent, that those efforts along with our vaccination program, our testing program have really, in my opinion, set Union County apart and and really have. Done such a great service for our residents, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you Commissioner, Commissioner Garrettson.
Thank you Chairman, referring back to the other finance, there was item five. On this particular agenda, there's CWA Administration two and three, can you just tell me, is there a tie, the connection, the difference? And congratulations, while you're looking for that on items four and six, it is wonderful news through and through for the county.
Thank you, it's really teamwork through all the departments, not just human services, it's all efforts, county police, parks, rec. Administrative Services and the County Manager, Deputy, it's everyone.
Well said, woman to my heart, well said.
So three, so the LAHE program is for, it's the Energy Assistance Program that goes through. The county and the Division of Social Services does the administration, number three and. Number three and number five on the financial report is, it ties in to my resolutions. So I submit it, finance receives it, they have to put it in for us to receive the money.
I thank you, I just saw the correlation, and I just wanted to make sure that I was following the following the the direction properly and you confirmed, so thank you, thank you Chairman, that's all I have.
All right, thank you Director.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Let's move to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Director Zuber.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners, the Park Department of Parks and Recreation has three items on tonight's agenda, and I'll try to answer any questions you have.
I'd like to, I'd like to ask Commissioner Mudet to speak to number three. I know she was instrumental in ensuring that this was on the agenda and working with the township of Westfield, but I want to turn it over right to Commissioner Mudet.
Thank you Chair, I guess the County Manager and I met with Mayor Brindle several times over the past few months, actually. A year before COVID, and she expressed the great need in Westfield for more fields, playing fields for our youth, particularly in Tomacos Park. So we wanted to add it to our already in place master parks plan in the hopes that we can help Westfield in the near future, so I'm very excited about that. And I hope to see some good things happening in Westfield.
Yeah, let let me compliment you, Commissioner, for your efforts to make this happen, because it. It's definitely in need in Westfield to improve field space usability, this accomplishes that, complementing our. A master plan that's in place and we're putting county resources where we could help our community is what we all try to do, and I particularly. Point that out about your efforts in this space, because it's a real need in a in a township like Westfield. I know many communities around our county are looking for creative ways to improve field space and usability, whether it's lights or turf or. Finding areas that we can help develop together, and you deserve a lot of credit, I appreciate you for for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have questions for Directors Uber? All right. I don't see any, Director, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move to the Department of Public Safety, Director Moran.
Good evening Chairman, members of the board, Department of Public Safety has two resolutions for your consideration, I'll try and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I don't I don't see any hands yet, but Director, if you can speak a little bit to number two, the C Box Corporation, we're getting to agreement with them, and what kind of this does for us?
Yeah, this project will involve enhancements to a shipping container that we we have purchased for our Metro Urban Search and Rescue Teams. It, they use it for training, for lifting, moving, shoring, concrete breaching, steel burning, cutting plywood. But it's to simulate confined space rescue, and we want to make some modifications to it. In, so it would enhance our trading capabilities for muse R T.
Thank you Director, any questions, doesn't look like it, all right, Director Moran, thank you.
Thank you.
The Office of the County Council, County Council Bergen.
Good evening Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, nice to see you, the County Council's office has two resolutions tonight for your consideration, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for the County Council? Okay, I don't see any, thank you Bruce.
Thank you Chairman.
Move to the Office of the County Manager, County Manager Oatman.
Thank you Chairman, members of the board, good evening, I have one item on tonight's agenda, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you County Manager, any questions for the County Manager? Okay, I don't see any, thank you County Manager.
Thank you Chairman.
To Commissioner sponsored resolutions, any comments from my fellow Commissioners? Unfortunately, a bunch of condolences resolutions, but besides that, everything looks like in order, okay? All right, I don't see any questions, so we are gonna be completing our. Agenda meeting, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn that meeting.
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Leon, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes Chairman, Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mudet?
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, that's five votes in the affirmative, we are adjourned.
All right, thank you Mr. Clerk, I understand we need to take a kind of a recess, typically we go right into our business meeting, but we will be taking a ten minute. At least ten minutes, there's some stuff you have to get in order before our business meeting or regular meeting, so we're gonna probably Robert sign off. To Facebook Live and then come back when we're ready to start, should be in ten or fifteen minutes, okay? So thank you everybody, and we'll we we'll get back together when our. Regular meeting is gonna start, thank you.
You can start now.
Good evening and welcome, I call this meeting to order of the Union County Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Regular meeting, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes Chairman, Commissioner Garrettson?
Here.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon?
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri Mudet?
Here.
Commissioner Staton, Vice Chair Williams, and Chairman Mirabella.
Present.
Chairman, you have seven Commissioners present for tonight's regular meeting.
Okay, great, Mr. Clerk, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
I believe we ask God the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, while we're putting our videos on, please, Mr. Clerk, read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Yes, the Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title Ten, Chapter Four, Section Ten of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year twenty twenty-one. Along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice. And by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year twenty twenty-one in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year twenty twenty-one with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, we will move to the approval of communications, and I have a motion to approve the communications.
I'll move.
Moved by Commissioner Kowalski, may I have a second, Commissioner Mudet seconds, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mudet?
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have seven votes in the affirmative for the communications?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, we'll move to the approval of minutes, I have a motion to approve the following minutes, May sixth, two thousand twenty-one, agenda and regular meeting. And the May twentieth, agenda and regular meeting. We have a motion, please.
I'll move.
Moves by Commissioner Granados, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Hudak seconds, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
I'd all with the exception of abstaining on May twentieth agenda meeting.
Commissioner Hudak?
I'd all.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
I vote yes to all, with the exception of May twentieth agenda setting session, I abstain from it.
Commissioner Palmieri Mudet?
I'd all.
And Chairman Mirabella?
I'd all.
Chairman, you have seven votes in the affirmative for the minutes, with the exception of the Thursday, May sixth, twenty twenty-one. I'm sorry, Thursday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-one, agenda setting session, we have five votes in the affirmative and two abstentions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Clerk, tonight we have one ordinance for adoption and one ordinance for introduction, this time. To ask the clerk of the board to read the ordinance for adoption and final reading by title.
Yes Chairman, ordinance number eight three zero dash twenty twenty-one. An ordinance to amend part one, the Union County Administrative Code, chapter one, Union County Government Structure by amending article fourteen. Departments, divisions, bureaus, section one dash seventy-one, departments enumerated, deleting article twenty, Department of Corrections. And amending chapter one forty, contracted off-duty employment of law enforcement officers.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, the meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on ordinance number eight three zero, two thousand twenty-one only. Mr. Clerk, is there anyone who has signed up to comment on this ordinance?
Chairman, there are no members of the public. In our queue to comment on this ordinance, nor did I receive any written statements to be read into the record.
Okay, at this time, I'll close the public comment portion, and we will. Move to adoption, I'll formally close this portion and ask Commissioner Kowalski to please move ordinance number eight three zero, two thousand twenty-one for final reading, Commissioner.
Yes. I move eight three zero twenty twenty-one and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise the same in accordance with the law.
Okay, may I have a second, please?
A second.
Second, Commissioner Hudak, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mudet?
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have seven votes in the affirmative on ordinance eight three zero dash twenty twenty-one.
Okay, very good, we also stated we have one ordinance for first reading, Mr. Clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Yes Chairman, ordinance number eight three one dash twenty twenty-one. An ordinance to amend part one, the Union County Administrative Code, chapter one, Union County Government Structure by amending article twenty-one, Department of Public Safety. Section one dash one twenty-seven, Division of Emergency Services.
Okay, very good, I'll ask Commissioner Kowalski to move this ordinance, please.
Yes Chairman, I'll move ordinance number eight three one dash twenty twenty-one for first reading. And authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law, the public hearing and final reading will be held on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you Commissioner, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hudak, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mudet? I'm sorry, Commissioner Palmieri Mudet?
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have seven votes in the affirmative on the ordinance eight three one dash twenty twenty-one.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Clerk, now I'll ask for a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the joining of both the public comment. And resolution being offered for adoption and the public comment for any governmental issue that a member of the public feels. Maybe of benefit to the county of Union residents into one public meeting comment session, may I have a motion for that, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Kowalski, seconded by Commissioner Mudet, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mudet?
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have seven votes in the affirmative for the suspension of the rules.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, meeting is now over to the public for anyone wishing to speak on any resolution to be for adoption or any other matter. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody in the queue that signed up to make comment?
Chairman, there's no one in the queue to sign up to comment on either. Chairman, there's no one in the queue to sign up to comment on either resolutions or in any matter, and double check the the request to enter, and still no one. So we have no one in our queue to comment on tonight's resolutions.
All right, very good, Mr. Clerk. At this time, seeing that there's no comments, I will formally close this portion of the meeting and ask for a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty one dash four seven three through twenty one, twenty twenty one dash five three nine. Moved by Commissioner Mudet. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mudet?
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, that's seven votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Okay, very good. We will move on to Commissioner reports and comments, and I will start with Commissioner Hudak.
Thank you, Chairman. I will bank my time to see.
Very good, Commissioner. Thank you. We'll move to Commissioner Mudet.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to recognize all of our graduates. I know we, we talked about it at our last meeting, but I want to recognize all of them and congratulate them. I was fortunate enough to be part of the Lambert Smith Academy Ceremony and the Lesniak Recovery Institute Ceremony last Friday. And it just made me remind myself that not every student is the same. And especially during this super, super difficult year, a lot of our students had so many, many challenges, and the fact that they were able to get to the point of graduating is really such an amazing accomplishment. And I want to just recognize that not everyone's journey is the same, and, and it's really just a wonderful thing to see. And I know we've also had a lot of, and we still have a lot of sadness and, and loss, but I do want to recognize someone that I put a resolution out for, Mary Jean Dugan of Linden, who celebrated her ninetieth birthday this month. And then I also see that Chair, you have someone from Mountainside who celebrates her hundred and third birthday. So among a lot of loss, we have some really great, wonderful birthdays to celebrate. So with that, I will finish my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move to Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chairman. I would ask that as we move into the summer season, just a reminder to all of our residents to enjoy our parks, enjoy the outdoors, but please be safe when you do that. If you're going out, it's good to have a partner. If you're not going to have a partner, let someone else know where you are and bring water and stay hydrated and enjoy the summer and best wishes for the Fourth of July. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chairman. I want to make note that on June thirtieth, the County of Union Commissioner Board, along in collaboration with the NAACP, from Elizabeth, the Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce and the Mills at Jersey Gardens, will be hosting a job fair. You can visit ucnj.org for more information on how to sign up for the shop fair. There's going to be over, I believe, a hundred and fifty employers looking for employees of individuals who are interested in getting employed, and it's definitely going to be a great benefit to many residents who are looking for jobs. So I just want to mention that, and congratulations to all the graduates, eighth grade, elementary school, high school, et cetera. We truly are appreciative and thankful for each one of you. Thank you, Chairman.
Terrific. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Garrison?
I'll bank my time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Leon?
I don't want to bank my time. I got a couple of things to say.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Anyway, June has been very busy, and I'm so happy that I was able to take part in so many events that were offered by our county, our city. The Portugal Day Flag Racing, Juneteenth Celebrations, and the Flag Racing for, and all the Pride Flag Racing and all the Pride Events. I, I just, I'm so happy. I was part of everything. I have seen firsthand how diverse our county is and how it's celebrating everyone's rights and equality. I also want to thank the entire department's staff for their continued efforts during this pandemic. And in closing, me, the educator, I want to congratulate all the students that have graduated and they're moving forward and they're continuing their education at colleges, universities. I'm truly so happy for all of them, young men and women from all races graduating and continuing their education, which is definitely a key in succeeding, moving forward and breaking those glass ceilings. And that's about it. Thank you, everyone. Also, my father turned eighty-six on June third, and mommy's turning eighty-six on July first, and I have him home and I'm very happy and I'm there for them. Thank you, everyone.
Happy birthday to Grant.
You're taken.
Beautiful. I do want to, want to thank, in addition to Commissioner Leon, thank all the municipalities in the county for all the events, Juneteenth and the Pride Events. There's a few more Pride Events next week. On Monday, in Scotch Plains, there's a local municipal Pride Event from six to eight. And then on Wednesday, there is, I think you have to pre-register, but it's a trivia night at Ashbrook. So there are still some events happening in that, but I too join this board in really celebrating the diversity and the acceptance and the inclusion of our municipalities and the county and all the residents. It's been really wonderful events all, all month long. One other particular event I would like to comment on is the David Wright Picnic House in Winfield. The County Manager, Commissioner Kowalski, and Senator Scipari was able to, were able to be on site Saturday, right? And I know many of my fellow Commissioners would have liked to be there as well, but they all were spread out to so many events happening at the same time. But particularly gave us an opportunity to honor David Wright, who was a longtime mayor and a Commissioner in Winfield, and longtime Deputy County Clerk was kind of Mr. Winfield from my perspective and the, and the face of Winfield for many, many years. And we were able to designate that portion of the county park that runs through Winfield in his honor. His wife Sue was there and his, his fellow, his, his sons and daughter-in-laws and grandchildren. It was a wonderful, wonderful event, and I appreciate everybody for, for being there. In addition to all the other graduations, there were two fire graduations as well. And I want to just make note of those really quickly. The daytime class graduated from the Union County Fire Academy at Kane University, the first graduating daytime class out of our new fire academy. So I'm proud of that. And the nighttime class graduated the following week at Union County College. I want to thank Director Moran for all his efforts seeing that Fire Academy come together and now to see our great new newly minted firefighters come out of those academies. It's just wonderful, and we're doing our part to keep our community safe throughout the year. And the last thing I would like to just mention is something, the connection we really have with our communities and our municipalities. I have asked the County Manager and Deputy County Manager to organize bi-weekly, every three weeks, updates with our mayors and business administrators. And we had a recent update today. We gave them an update on the COVID vaccinations, some of the testing, some other things going on in the county regarding grants. And I'm so happy that the mayors and the business administrators are taking advantage of of doing that and taking, taking advantage of that communication. I appreciate particularly today, the Commissioners, three Commissioners joined in on that call, and all are welcome to listen in or participate. Commissioner Kowalski, Hudak, and Granados, who made time in their day to, to participate with our mayors, and it's a valuable thirty minutes. I think the communities are really appreciating it. And it's something I hope will go on for many, many years. There's so much information to share with our municipalities and the great partners we have throughout our county. Okay? I don't have anything else unless anybody else does. Doesn't look like that. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hudak, seconded by Commissioner Mudet. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Commissioner Garrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mudet?
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella?
Aye.
Chairman, you have seven votes in the affirmative for this meeting is adjourned.
Have a great day, everybody. Thanks. Enjoy Independence Day. Enjoy it coming up and have a safe summer. Bye.